Good evening, everyone. I'm Alan Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem. It's my honor to call to order this November 6th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and I ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council meeting in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you please join the city council meeting in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant at Arms tonight is Lieutenant Jeffrey Thompson. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. We have two honorary items tonight before we get into the regular agenda, so may we have item H1, please.
Item H1, City Manager Oath of Office, William Patrick Pate.
Mr. Pate, would you join me at the podium? And I'd like to ask the city council if you would stand at your places, because we are all in this together. Well, Pat and Mrs. Pate, we are just delighted to have you here, and we've been all ready for you to be here for a while. And so, city councilman and I, going to join you if you would. Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and repeat after me if you would. I state your name.
I, William Patrick Pate.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
And maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
The Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As City Manager, so help me God.
As City Manager, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll just quickly say I'm honored by council's appointment of me as the City Manager. We will do my best. I will recognize my brother. Stand up. He drove in from Charlotte, surprised me with my wife. But we're looking forward to being here in Winston-Salem, back in Winston-Salem, as you all know. And we're looking forward to all the great things we're going to accomplish in this community. So, thank you very much for this privilege.
Thank you, Pat. And to Mrs. Pate, we welcome all of you to the City of Winston-Salem. Tonight's agenda is comprised of a number of public hearings dealing with annexation, six zoning petitions, and a closed session. When these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I will close the public hearing and we'll consider the item. If there is opposition to the zoning public hearing item, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, then the public hearing will be closed and the city council will consider the item. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again tomorrow at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agendas are always available online on the city's website. You just click on the watch meetings online option. So, members of the Winston-Salem University, I didn't forget you. Well, I did. But we celebrated a little bit earlier with the graduation of this class who has spent 12 weeks learning about city government. And I told them that they were a very special group, that they were carefully selected by committee, and that looked at what we thought were individuals who could help carry the message of what city government is all about, and the big business of city government, and how careful we are in providing services to our citizens. So, we got a resolution, I believe, so I'd ask to read the resolution now, please.
H2, Resolution Honoring the 2023 City of Winston-Salem University Graduates. Whereas there are 19 city residents who have successfully completed City of Winston-Salem University, David Ajami, 12.
Would you stand up with your name and his call, please?
Bettina Bearby, Catherine Bodry, Barbara Cassidy, Phyllis DiAgostino, Brenda Fulmore, Benjamin Greider, Latisha Harrison, Arthur Jackson, Janice Jennings, Ahmed Johnson, Kimberly McNeil, Robert McGott.
Robert's fine.
Abimeal.
Abimeal.
Mendoza Cruz, Kenneth Patridge. Jack Payden Travers, Adrian Smith, Kim Smith, Christopher Taylor. And whereas, the coursework has included over 33 hours covering 20 city departments and divisions, completing a ride-along with Winston-Salem Police Department or the Winston-Salem Fire Department, attending a city council or committee meeting, and completing one of the following: shadowing a City Link agent, a walking tour of the Innovation Quarter, touring the Archie Elidge Wastewater Treatment Plant, going on a Bond bus tour, or touring the Real-Time Crime Center, and completing a budget project. And whereas, their dedication has resulted in a better understanding and appreciation of city government, and has given them the resources to better serve their community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the Winston-Salem City Council hereby approve honoring the aforementioned 2023 City of Winston-Salem University graduates, and wish them much success with their future as community leaders.
Again, thank you all for devoting 12 weeks of your, or 12 evenings of your life to learning more about city government, and we hope that you will be great ambassadors for the work that you go on. Councilmembers, anybody else want to say anything? Mayor Protem?
Thank you again so much. You know, when this program was started, it's turning out to be exactly what the city had planned years ago. I think it's important. Education information is key to anybody, any citizen's, understanding of how government works. Back in the day, there was Civics 101 that a lot of us Boomers had to take. It was a requirement, like gym. Then you had to pass it. And unfortunately, that's not really offered, and there is a movement to bring that back. But like the mayor said, I'm hoping that all of you will go forth and spread the word and your knowledge to other citizens. You know, I'm gonna keep it real. When people say things or misspoke, misspeak about things that are not true about the process of operations and what we do and how we do it, and you know how it's done now, I would hope and expect that you will help to clarify that and give them what you know, which is the knowledge that now you have received. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. So now, we'll move into our regular agenda. May we have item Z1, please?
Item Z1, Adoption of Resolution Regarding the National League of Cities 2023 Annual Conference.
This is a conference that obviously a number of our councilmembers go to, and this resolution recommends that Councilmember Cipio would be the voting delegate, and Councilmember Burke would be the alternate, and I would entertain a motion in that regard. Motion second. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protem was ready with a motion. I apologize.
I move for the approval of item Z1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Don't worry, I'll get my name in the running.
That is unanimous. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item Z2.
Item Z2, Public Hearing on Petition for the Voluntary Annexation of Approximately 17.387 Acres Located Northwest of the Confluence of Brookberry Farm Circle and Rosewind Lane and North of Brookberry Farm Circle.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed voluntary annexation? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I recognize Councilmember Clark.
I move for approval of item Z2.
Second.
Second by Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Item Z3.
Item Z3, Public Hearing on Petition for the Voluntary Annexation of Approximately 16.301 Acres Located West of the Confluence of Brookberry Farm Circle and Rosewind Lane and South of Brookberry Farm Circle.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard of this proposed voluntary annexation? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Clark.
I move for approval of item Z3.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember McIntosh. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item Z4.
Item Z4, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of City of Winston-Salem from Forsyth County RS9 to Winston-Salem RS9. Property is located on the west side of Stires Ferry Road, south of Wood Cove Drive, containing approximately 4.015 acres located in the west ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in council chamber who is here to speak on this proposed zoning, really just converting the county zoning to city zoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Clark again.
I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3592.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item Z5.
Item Z5, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of City of Winston-Salem from Forsyth County MUS to Winston-Salem MUS. Property is located on the north side of Brookberry Farm Circle at the northern terminus of both Maple Chase Lane and Penns Meadow Lane, contains approximately 17.32 acres located in the west ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in council chamber who is interested in speaking regarding this proposed zoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Clark.
I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3593.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? Those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item Z6.
Item Z6, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of City of Winston-Salem, W-3594, from Forsyth County MUS to Winston-Salem MUS. Property is located on the south side of Brookberry Farm Circle at the southern terminus of both Maple Chase Lane and Penns Meadow Lane, containing approximately 16.42 acres located in the west ward. Planning Board recommends approval.
Is there anyone in council chamber who is interested in speaking relative to this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, recognize Councilmember Clark.
I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3594.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Clark, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. You get extra paid this month. Item Z7, please.
Item Z7, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Parkway Place 1 and 2 LLC, W-3595, from RM18 to HB. Property is located on the north side of East Haynes Mill Road, east of University Parkway, containing approximately 1.18 acres located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3595. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke moves approval, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item Z8.
Item Z8, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Baptist Retirement Homes, Inc., W-3596, from RS9, RS9S, RM12S, RM18S, and NOS to CL. Property is located on the south side of Bethabre Road, across from Deacon Ridge Drive, contains approximately 46.31 acres located in the north ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner, Mr. Dickey, is here. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Mayor Protem Adams.
Thank you. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3596.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mayor Protem Adams, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now, item Z9.
Item Z9, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Dixon William Luther, Lillian Evans and Lillian Evans, W-3599, from RM12S and RS9S to RM8S. Property is located on the south side of J. Avenue, east of Old Salisbury Road, containing approximately 27.05 acres located in the south ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
We do have someone signed in opposition to this, so we will go into the public hearing. Mr. Dickey, if you would like to make some comments as a proponent, if you have 15 minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem Adams. Luke Dickey with Stimel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, 27101. Thank you for the opportunity to get before you this evening and present this project, Pulte Homes. It's called Elm Grove off of Old Salisbury Road. This is the site currently, is right off of Old Salisbury Road, south of Stafford Village Boulevard. As mentioned, the front of this portion is zoned RM12S, and the back portion of the site is zoned RS9. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of where that division line is for the zoning. This was the original approved plan for that RS12S portion. It's 8.74 acres. It had 84 units permitted, which is about 9.58 units per acre, and it's a three-story building. The back section being RS9 is 17.9 acres. That would permit 86 lots for the current zoning, which would be 4.84 units per acre. So, in total, the site would permit by right today 170 units, at an aggregate of about 6.38 units per acre. The site plan is proposed, is again 27, just over 27 acres, is proposed for 125 townhomes with a density of 4.62 units per acre. The primary access would be off of Old Salisbury Road, and then the secondary access would be off of Devon Kathleen Lane. Now, Devon Kathleen Lane is a stub road to the south portion of the site, so we need to make that connection per city ordinance requirements, because we can make that connection. There's nothing that would impede that to happen in that location. There is a 15-foot minimum type 2 buffer yard that would be required adjacent to the single-family residential, definitely there to the south, and then to the north. Also, as part of this rezoning request, we're coming for you in the future for the closure of J. Avenue there to the north. There's a portion of that that is unapproved, that kind of is a finger that comes down in the middle of the site. We have worked with Mr. Wheeler, who's on the north side of J. Avenue. He attended the planning board meeting with concerns that we had shown a turnaround that was located in front of his property. As part of that, we've come back, and the plan that's presented to you this evening is taking that turnaround and moving it as far to the west as we can towards Old Salisbury. So, you see the little red hatched area there in the top northwest corner is to provide for a location of a turnaround. So, we remove that from his, in front of his property. Also, what will be coming for you in the future will be a road closure for that portion of J. Avenue, and the negotiations with Mr. Wheeler on the transfer of that property to him in front of him, and then the remainder of the portion of the site will be developed for this townhome project. Overall, you can see most of the townhomes are focused towards the front of the site. There is a water line and a stream on the back portion and steep slopes, so that will remain undeveloped. Then you see our stormwater device there towards the back in the northeast corner. We'll have some trails that will provide extra amenities there. Then we have three little pockets of common recreation area ordinance requirements that are in, distributed throughout the site along with the mail kiosk. Kind of the key thing that we had when we met with the neighbors was concerned, of course, with the connection to Devon Kathleen Lane was in regards to traffic and cut-through traffic through the existing single-family neighborhood to the south there. Just want to kind of show, this is an exhibit showing the furthest unit that's actually closest to Devon Kathleen. The blue line represented there is, to get out into Old Salisbury Road is about 1,260 linear feet. They have to take one left turn lane. There's no stop conditions. They kind of go out there, and there's no major subdivision entrance or access right across from that. Mid Pines is a small road with no really major development off of it. So, that is the quickest and easiest route for anybody in this development to get out to Old Salisbury Road. The orange line, then, is representing what it would take to go through the neighborhood to the south, and it's 1,760 linear feet, which is roughly 40% longer of a travel route. You have to stop and turn right onto Tortoise Lane. You have to make a left turn then at Megan Elizabeth Lane, and then you can turn left or right, of course, on Old Salisbury. This entrance here is across from a major subdivision entrance at Woodstone Drive, so you can see the amount of single-family homes that would come out there. So, there's a little bit more conflict in that term. So, we propose that anybody that is in this development would actually exit out on the blue line through the development as opposed to going to the subdivision there to the south. What this does open up, though, is for anybody that's on Stone Moss Lane would actually have a better route probably to get out through our development that's being proposed, instead of coming back down through to Tortoise Lane. So, that would have some benefits for them from a connectivity standpoint as well to distribute the traffic through. One of the main questions is why we could not connect to J. Avenue through the development, and we're making the connection down to Old Salisbury Road and our tie-in then to Devon Kathleen. The way the site grades out, we have to push the site down to balance out the grade. So, what we end up being is roughly 13 to 20 feet below J. Avenue, so there's really no way to make that physical connection up in that location there. This is the preliminary elevations for the proposed townhomes. We did have our neighborhood outreach. We sent out 155 total letters. Everywhere with the number there is those who we had sent information to for this to attend. We did it online. We had 16 neighbors that did reach out to us with 13 attending the online meeting. And mainly, their concerns, again, of course, was the traffic and the cut-through through the neighborhood. The portion of the site, again, is a down zoning of RM12 to RM8, and from a large 84-unit, three-story building to two-story townhomes. The proposed density of the project is 4.62 units per acre, which is comparable to what is permitted in RS9 zoning of 4.84 units per acre. Townhomes represent a good transition from the approved multifamily to the northeast, up along Stafford Village Boulevard, and then also to the single-family, then to the south as a transition. The layout of the site promotes the use of the proposed entrance on Old Salisbury Road versus access to the adjacent neighborhood, and again, Planning Board recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. Anyone else for the proponents?
No, we do have representative developers here if there's any questions for them.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll then turn to the opposition. Tom, and I'm sorry, I apologize if I can't read the last name. Okay, thank you. If you would, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Name's Tom Hubach, address 200 Tortoise Lane, Winston-Salem, 27127. My house is right at Devon Kathleen where it tees in. The stop sign there with the traffic is more of a consideration than an actuality, because people blow that stop left and right. Speed limit's supposed to be 25. People consistently go faster than that. Our opposition, talking to my neighbors, and many of them did not get noticed, but that point is water under the bridge. Don't tie into Devon Kathleen. You've got two totally different complexes. What is proposed is a townhome complex. Tortoise Creek area is single-family home. We've got a diverse, mixed group of people there at the T. Devon Kathleen and Tortoise. Retiree, 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 soon-to-be-retired, 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 a lot of retired people. You also have a lot of families with small children, and throughout the ages as well. Our only issue with this project is tying into Devon Kathleen. Don't. And everybody will be happy. It'll also tie in to the planning commission's Legacy 2030, which is to be, let's see, 9.1 character regarding the character. You don't want to have an adverse impact on the community, and what tying into Devon Kathleen will. And the comment about the people up on Alexander Preston or Stone Moss Lane going up through that development versus coming down the way they've been for years, I find it difficult to believe that someone's going to drive through a parking lot to get through to another street. And that's all I have to say on that. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hubach. Anyone else for the opposition? All right, Mr. Dickey, would you like to add anything on rebuttal?
Thank you. The only clarification I'd like to make is these would be public streets that would tie through with driveways, so there are, it's not through a parking lot, just so we know that that's what is being proposed on this. We are tying public streets together for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for rebuttal for the proponents? All right, this would be for opposition. Okay, okay, we'll go to the opposition. Please state your name and address, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Lynn Hubach. I am the spouse of Thomas Hubach at 200 Tortoise Lane. And again, we're absolutely opposed, because there is a more logical access point, which would be off of Stratford Village. There is a huge apartment complex, and that matches more of the community that the developer is trying to tie into versus the character of the single-family homes that we have. And oh, by the way, does the city council know? And oh, by the way, does the city council know that at Tortoise Lane and Devon Kathleen, there are eight buses, school buses, that stop there in front of my house every single day? Trying to connect this particular development to our development access is going to have an absolute adverse effect on traffic, on children. I want you to understand, eight buses a day, 4:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon, directly at that corner. You need to consider this, and definitely the developer needs to consider this, on the impact of our entire community by trying to tie in and access our street. I'm absolutely opposed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else for the opposition? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and ask Mr. Murphy to give the report to the planning board.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of city council. This is case W3599. It is a request to rezon, a little over 27 acres of property on the south side of J Avenue, east of Old Salisbury Road, from RM12S and RS9 to RM8S. This is the subject property highlighted on the county, on the city and county growth management area plan. It is located within GMA 3. You see the dot there, it's just to the west of the Peters Creek Activity Center there, south of Stafford Village Boulevard. This is a subject property highlighted in yellow. You do see the green notification area of 500 feet around the subject property, which again would explain why some of the folks in the neighborhood did not receive notification. I'm not sure what the, what the petitioner did. It could have been more extensive than that, but this is the notification that is required to go out by the ordinance. Again, you do see the two zoning districts there, RM12S and RS9. Subject property outlined in yellow on the countywide aerial imagery. You do see the, that Devon Kathleen does stub into the property from the south. This is the subject property shown on the South Suburban Area Plan update. It does show as single-family residential is the recommended land use of 0 to 8 units per acre. This is looking north along Old Salisbury Road. The main entrance for this development is to the right on this image. This is looking south at the intersection of Old Salisbury and J Avenue. Subject property is to the left off the image. This is at the terminus of J Avenue, looking into the subject property. You know, you notice J Avenue is a two-lane tire track gravel road. In addition to the information that Mr. Dickey with Stimmo and Associates alluded to, there is also an exception for requiring a connection to an existing street if the, if the existing street is less than 18 feet in width. And if you notice there, we're looking at gravel tire tracks as the existing public street. And again, this is an old street, an old paper street that's been, it's been on, it's been a publicly dedicated street for years, but it's not publicly maintained. Again, this is looking at the revised site plan. Again, the site plan was revised following the planning board meeting to move that required turnaround for the closure of J Avenue further to the west, away from Mr. Wheeler's property. Again, it does show an existing, it shows the proposed street network being public streets, townhomes fronting on those public streets, and it does show the connection to Devon Kathleen from these proposed public streets to the existing public streets, which is a requirement in the ordinance. The ordinance requires for stub streets to be connected to other public streets. I'm sorry, here is the revised, that was the original plan. Here is the revised plan that shows that connection moved further to the west, excuse me, that turnaround moved further to the west. These are just the existed, the proposed elevations of the townhomes. These are some examples of what the townhomes would look like that the, that the property owner has built in other places. In summary, the request is generally consistent with the recommendations of the South Suburban Area Plan and Legacy 2030, in that it matches the required, or it matches the recommended density of 0 to 8 units per acre. The overall density for this project is less than five units per acre. It is a townhome project, however, but again, one of the things that we see more prevalent, more prevalent today than we did approximately five or six years ago is the utilization of townhomes as a form of a more affordable housing, to try to get more affordable housing in, as the construction of single-family homes becomes more and more difficult. The proposed development density is density neutral, and it is in conformance with the density recommended in the area plan. This request does also serve as a transitional development between institutional and multifamily uses further to the north and northeast, and the single-family residences to the south and west. This was heard by the planning board at their October 12, 2023, public hearing. There was one speaker in opposition, which was, it was the Wheeler family, and they were concerned about that turnaround. Following the public hearing, the planning board did recommend approval of the rezoning request unanimously, but did ask the developer to try to work with the Wheelers to relocate that turnaround further to the west, which again, you've heard from both the petitioner and myself, that that has been accomplished. Again, that was, that was the previous approval. That was just on here to show you what, what had previously been approved for the RM12S portion of the, of the site. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Larson.
Go ahead.
Uh-oh.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Siff, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Dickey made a comment that J Avenue was above the development site. Is that right?
I believe that's, that's as, as a result of their development. I, I'm not sure what the existing grade is, but I believe because of the way they're balancing their cut and fill, that J Avenue will be substantially higher than their proposed streets.
And what are they doing to minimize erosion into the development?
Well, they'll have, well, they'll have to meet all the stormwater and erosion control measures that are states, state and local statutes. So they're showing a stormwater management pond, a lot of times for construction of projects such as these. The stormwater management pond is the erosion control pond, sedimentation erosion control pond during construction, and it gets transitioned to a permanent stormwater management device, but they'll have to meet all the erosion control measures as, throughout their construction.
And there was a mention that Stratford Village Boulevard could be connected to this development, but I didn't see the, that coming into the new design.
Oop, going the wrong way. If you'll notice, there, Stafford Village Boulevard is off the image further to, to the north here. I'm going to go back to the, this image here. This is a subject property. This is where Stafford Village Boulevard comes through. This is a piece of property that has some multifamily residential developed on this portion of the site, but you notice the streams that pull through this portion of this property. It's very difficult, from a topographic standpoint, to get a connection back across this development, back out into Stafford Village. If someone were to come in and develop this, we would certainly work with them to try to find that connection, if it were possible, but contrast that, where there is no current ability to make that connection, to Devon Kathleen, which was specifically built and constructed with a stub street. It's not a cul-de-sac. That's, that street was left as a stub in order to provide for interconnectivity between developments. That's why that connection is being made at this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Murphy. I think that most of the concerns that have been expressed have been regarding Kathleen, Devon Kathleen Road, and the traffic that it might generate, and out of the, what is it, 170 units? How many units are being built here? What's the total number of units that we have?
125.
125 out of, out of the potential of 170, I think it was. So we really have less density than what is authorized under that space. Yes. I think the concern is about Ca, Devon Kathleen, and you just, I know you've said it, but could you be very clear about it? There's been a lot of discussion about why is we not going out on J Avenue instead of using, instead of forcing them out on Ca, Devon Kathleen? And I think, of course, one of the topography is one of the questions, but I think the bigger concern is, or at least a code requirement, that you connect to that Devon Kathleen Road by the, by this development. Is that correct?
Correct.
They're required, they're required to make that connection in this development.
This is... Well, I wanted to be able to show these images, but there is, you know, basically the existing back-to-back for Devon Kathleen is a 27-foot back-to-back from edge of curb to edge of curb. As I showed you in this image earlier, that, the image on the, the portion of this image to the far left, that's J Avenue. And J Avenue is currently a gravel road. And there are provisions in the ordinance that specifically, if you have a, an existing public right-of-way with a street in it that is less than 18 feet in width, that is an exception for having to make the connection. So that's the reason why there isn't a connection to J, and there is a connection to Devon Kathleen.
Yeah, but you got, in Devon Kathleen, we have a dead end, basically, currently waiting to, waiting to move across the property line.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's currently what's known as a stub street. It's not a cul-de-sac. It's not a, it's not the end of the road. It is specifically... That's what Devon Kathleen currently looks like. So you can see it is stubbed to the property line, ready to move forward as a public street. This is what J Avenue looks, if you're standing, if you're in front of the Wheeler's house and you're looking back towards Old Salisbury Road, it looks like, it, it looks substandard, but it's probably 18 to 20 foot of pavement width. This is looking from, that's the Wheeler's house right there. That's looking east on J Avenue. That, that's what the public street currently looks like. So there's not really any avenue to connect to that street, which is why, going back to this, this is where the connection has to be made by the ordinance, because it is set up for that.
Right, it was designed, when, when this development, this housing development was developed, it was designed that that would be the next development, would be further to the north than what we're looking at currently.
Correct. Yes, sir.
The big, big change, if there is any, it's the amount of housing, townhouses rather than individual houses, but even the density of those townhouses is less than what is authorized under the original, under the original.
Exactly. It's basically, this is, this is a, the, the townhomes are an attached product, but the density is essentially what the density you can get under single-family zone, actually a little bit less.
A little less, a little less, yeah. Thank you. That was my question. I don't have any other questions. If less.
Do you want to make a motion? I know we've got a couple of other questions, but maybe get a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mayor, I would like to move approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W3599.
Second. Motion second by Councilmember McIntosh, and then Councilmember Monday.
Question.
Question, yes.
Mr. Murphy, one of the complaints, I think, one of the concerns, was not everyone in that 500 feet, 500-foot range was invited, was notified. I've worked with you all on rezoning cases, and I think you're very thorough about that. Is there any way going forward, do you have a list of, of addresses that that goes to, or does that go through the developer? Help us understand how people could have been left out, or if they weren't left out, why they might not have gotten all of the information to attend.
Thank you, Councilmember Monday. Yes, there's a couple of different answers there. Yes, we, whenever we generate this map here, which is, the, the yellow is the subject property, and the 500 notified, 500-foot notification area is the, is the green buffer that's shown around the yellow subject property. So everyone that has property within that green area, that's a property owner, would have gotten a letter from the city for this. Contrast that, and I'm not sure, I'm not going to go back to the developers' presentation. I believe they may have had their notification in there. I'm not sure if it was the same as the city's, or whether it was larger, but the, the gentleman who spoke in opposition earlier, I believe said he lived on the corner of Devon Kathleen and Tortoise. And if so, if that's, if that's his property there, he wasn't even in the notification area, because he was more than 500 feet away. But yes, we actually have the list of the folks where, that the, that the notice was mailed to, and it's everyone that was shown in green that's a property owner.
Thank you. I just, I just want to reiterate the fact that we are, are being transparent as much as possible with everything we're doing.
Councilmember McIntosh?
This is not a question, more of an observation. Having been on council for 10 years, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I've learned how to imitate one at these meetings. We've all been through multiple, multiple traffic calming exercises, and we have learned that, or at least I have, people take the shortest, quickest route that they possibly can. If that involves avoiding speed bumps, they avoid speed bumps. If that means that avoid turns, they avoid turns. I feel very confident that folks from this will in fact not go the extra distance, time, and turns to come down Devon Kathleen, but will take the shortest route possible and head out on Old Salisbury Road that way. I, I understand the, the concern about increased traffic, but based on human interactions and what I've seen in my 10 years on council, I don't believe that's going to be the route chosen by most people in this development.
Thank you. We do have a motion second to approve this rezoning. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Councilmembers, we do have one other item, which is Z10, but before we deal with that, I'm going to recommend that we go into closed session, and Councilmember McIntosh has a motion to take us there.
I move that the Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A, A3 and 5, to provide additional instructions to staff regarding negotiations related to the acquisition of 800 Spring Street, and to consult with and receive legal advice from the city's legal staff related to other ESR properties with outstanding city loans.
Mr. Second.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll then all head into closed session, please.
Is there a motion to end the closed session?
No.
Motion by Councilor McIntosh, seconded by Councilor Clark to end the closed session. All those in favor of ending the closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are out of closed session. Recognize Councilor McIntosh for a motion.
Nobody is here, they have not sit.
Do we vote on that?
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
I move that we approve the acquisition.
We are out of closed session.
Yeah, but she said she's got to read the item.
Let her read the item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item Z-10.
Item Z-10, consideration of items related to the purchase of property in support of the city's affordable housing objectives in addition to the preservation of workforce housing. Resolution authorizing the purchase of property in support and ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2023-2024.
Thank you. I recognize Councilor McIntosh.
I move that we, A, approve the acquisition of 800 Spring Street for $760,000 and the companion PBO. B, approve the forgiveness of the $65,000 note and deed of trust on said property conditioned upon ESR providing the city with a 90-day right of first refusal with respect to any other property that ESR owns which is encumbered by any outstanding city loans. C, instruct staff to collect at closing the outstanding balance on the other note and deed of trust which is approximately $95,598. And D, to sell as soon as possible.
Second. There's a motion, second. Motion of Councilor McIntosh, seconded by Mayor Protim Adams. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes six in favor, two opposed. Councilor Cipio and Councilor Protim are voting negative. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion of Councilor McIntosh, second, by Mayor Protim Adams to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we are adjourned.